Okay. So, welcome to the Town Board Work Session Tuesday, October 16th, 2018. We're just gonna cover one item and then we're going to go back into executive session and come back. I guess the viewer won't notice.
It'll be seamless.
It'll be seamless, right? But, so Dana, thank you for coming. This is Dana Burke. And Dana's very, very active in the community. And basically she approached...
I love it.
She approached the Chamber and a few merchants about an idea to do what's called Discover Chapacua. And essentially, I mean, and you can talk about it, but essentially it's a way to tie into this what we're doing here with the streetscape and the infrastructure.
Exactly. So, you know, with what's going on, you know, around and we thought that it was a great opportunity to... Originally it was to rediscover Chapacua, which we decided discover was had more longevity. So we wanted to kind of brand our, this hamlet. And so the first thing, you know, we talked about doing was brand identity. You know, there's lots of different logos around and, you know, but I think that we lack that cohesive one main branding identity that other towns do have. And so in the conversations at first it was actually not about the logo, but it was about branding the town by having some sort of, almost like a tourism site that really highlights not only the merchants and what's going on, but also community members and trying to bridge the gap between merchants and the town and the community members. So one of the ideas that we have is, you know, if we have like an Instagram section there that kids can, you know, submit their pictures and we can have a thing where it's just for the kids and that way we're engaging them and, you know, have different merchants, a highlight of the month or of the quarter and, you know, highlight them, maybe do some special discounts, that sort of thing. But really try to create a place where if somebody is coming and looking to travel and we're giving them a portal to go to where they can see all the arts that we have, all of the shopping, the, you know, the different restaurants that we have and, you know, really kind of package this, package the town. And then, you know, of course the logo came along with that conversation. So I actually have two people that I'm doing, that I'm working with, unfortunately they couldn't be here today. So, and Linda Fears is one of them and she's very active in the kind, in the Chamber of Commerce. So she would engage them and she does a lot of the writing and, you know, there's other logistics that we'd have to work out. But, you know, that's, I just think it would, it could really help kind of stimulate stuff going on here, especially with, there's a new site for the Chapacua crossings and all of that, so.
And then we also talked about, I don't mean to get off the subject of the website, we also talked, this is, I think, a vibe as I think where we'd have like, almost like a ribbon cutting, not just for the town, but also for the website and, you know, just, you know, tie it all together where a big block party and to introduce the people to the town with the, our new look and the website as well.
So I'm playing devil's advocate.
Absolutely.
So why would this be different than our Chamber of Commerce if they had a decent website?
Well, so...
Well, that's the...
Which they just revised.
Doesn't mean it's...
It's horrible.
We're on tape.
It's okay. But why wouldn't this be something that they should be doing?
I, you know, my, as a citizen of this town, my feeling is, is that the Chamber of Commerce is, the website that they're creating is really merchant, just looking at the merchants and it's really focused on more B2B and I think that we're missing that B2C. And that's what this will focus on. This will focus on bringing in, you know, people, there are tons, I work in this town and there are tons of talented people that live here that would be happy to write something and, and, and once they start doing that, they're talking to their friends and then there's interest and it kind of spreads like that and that's kind of how I see it. I mean, there would be maintenance on the site because I think that it has the potential to be maybe, you know, the site that everybody goes to.
The thing about the chambers, I mean, we had, we talked about this too. I mean, they, they are mostly B2B and they wanted their website to be more of like a merchant directory and that's fine, but that's, that doesn't necessarily, you know, that doesn't accomplish what Dana's suggesting. And by the way, there are some, there are towns, like if you look at Cold Spring, they use that as an example. They have both, you know, they have, one's like a tourism type of one and the other one is like a Chamber one.
Right.
And even if you look like I love New York, you know...
And they should link, you know, they're...
Right, they should link, correct.
Yeah.
But even like I love New York and there's all these towns and you see commercials for, you know, come out to Hawaii or come out to Puerto Rico, you know, that's not necessarily done by the Chamber, that's done by the town, which is trying to encourage tourism. And that's more what we would be doing here and the Chamber would be an organization for the Chamber.
So what, what are we, we're being asked to approve this invoice, what are we buying here in terms of the services for the website? So my business is, I build websites for local businesses, my partner and I have, you know, partners that I work with that are in India. So we started to do this as an exercise to kind of get it going and see, did this make sense, does it, you know, and does it have longevity and all of that? So we created the logo was the first thing that we had talked about doing, cause if you, you know, that's the brand and then the website build comes, you know, after that. So we, on Rob's approval, moved forward with just that small portion of it to kind of see, you know, start the exercise. And from there, in all the conversations, we've already created a site map, we know exactly kind of the different buckets that we'd like it to, to, to have. And so now would be the time that we would say, okay, if we're gonna do this, you know, this is now, now is the time to...
And who hosts it? Who hosts it?
We would, you, so usually what I do is, there's a company, WP Engine, you just host it through them, you own that and you host it directly with them and there's no, there's never been a problem.
That's WordPress?
Is there a fee?
There's a fee for that.
That's not much to host it.
So what's the ongoing fee?
I believe it's about, depending on the size of the site, it's a couple hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, they're all they got whole scanners.
Who's providing the content for this?
So that, so the first, with the launch, it would be, you know, Linda and I would go out and she, it's really her area and she would pull together all, everything that we're gonna, everything we want to build for the site is gonna be in like a blog format. So basically it's just a matter of pulling together all the different ideas of things that we have. She'll start writing it and we'll, you write a bunch and then you only, you know, release them on a schedule.
So that's included then?
Yes.
So we're not getting a separate invoice for content?
No, no, no.
What about moving forward in terms of content management?
Well, that's, that's something that came up in our conversation that we would, you know, have to talk about. I think that Linda is, and I don't want to speak for her, but I do believe that this is the role that she wants to take is to fill, to be able to have the content to fill. So she will go talk to, let's say, you know, one of the merchants, oh, you're the merchant of them, you know, we want to highlight you, are you doing something? And then she'll work with them to create, you know, what that content would be. But I do think that the potential is to have lots of different people contributing to it. So, but in the beginning it would be, you know, us.
She's talking about costs going forward. In other words, if we paid X amount now and then a year from now when you want to update the content, is that gonna be a separate charge?
No. Well, no, 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 to update it, cause then I do that.
Well, but it will, because Linda's not gonna want to get paid to do that or...
No, I think that this is part of...
Well, like if they went for the Chamber, they don't get paid. It's a volunteer way, basically.
Yeah, it's all volunteer. I mean, I do, like, this is volunteer.
It's a lot of work.
It's not a Chamber's...
It's a lot if you're gonna, it's a lot of work.
Well, the reason why the site, the price includes building it in a way that when you're inputting information in one place, it's gonna automatically do it in other places. So there are websites where if you upload a blog, you're just getting the blog and the image, but we'll do it so that if we have that story, it'll automatically go to the front homepage and so it, it will look like it's more content than it actually is. But, I mean, that, that is part of it. We, in order to have a website that you want people to go to, it has to continuously be...
Changing.
Changing. I mean, it's, I mean, it's basic.
We all, you know, we did years ago, we did that, the Welcome, the Resource Guy with Inside Chapacua. We own that content. I mean, that's, that's a ton of content we own. It talks about all the school districts, it talks about all the departments, the Stark Society, all the volunteer organizations. It's a ton of content that we can just add to that.
Exactly.
And then we also talked about like all the sustainability stuff. I mean, like, like we've, it's not just, it's not just for, you know, tourism and getting people to come here, it's also getting people to buy here, right? People should know what this community is about and all the activities we have, what a sense of community there is and also just the green, you know, millennials, who, you know, some millennials want to live in a green community. And, you know, this is, it's, this is what would be a selling point for us, to let people know what we are, what we're bad as a community and that this is why you should live here, or this is why you should eat here, or this is why you should shop here.
And it should be coming for a lot, some of the, I mean, it should be coming from the people who live here. And, you know, I do think that we could find people who are interested in creating content. We'd have to manage it, you know, the backend stuff. Once it's built, I can do all the, you know, the updates and stuff. That's, it's, that's not the time consuming thing, it's the build.
Right, those are questions we have to...
Like, you can't have kids uploading Instagram.
No, no, they're not. No, 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 everything has to be approved before...
No, we would own, we would own the content. We, somebody asked me a few questions, or right, I don't know if it was you or Ed, somebody asked me a few questions at AS Day and I said, these are the stipulations, we have to own the content.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, other issues came up and that's why you're here.
Yeah.
But the initial points were like, we have to own the content. What were some of the other things that were...
Well, somebody asked, you know, gatekeep it and make sure that, you know...
We have rules and regulations as well to be opposed to the intellectual property rights to the imaging.
No advertising, commercial advertising.
Right, we can't do commercial advertising.
And that would not, that was never the...
Intent.
Why wouldn't you sell ads? Make it, make it either a profit center or at least sell plans?
Cause the town can't do that.
Right. We're not in the business of...
Well, you can hire an agency to do that.
No, the town can't do that.
And by the way, one, one day that the Chamber did want to take this over or did want to merge with it, we could technically do that. Right now, you know, they just spent X amount of dollars on a new website and, you know...
So one of the things that I do is I also see behavior, I watch the behavior of a website because you could build something, but if you're not doing what you want it to do, then, you know, you gotta change it. And, you know, that's one of the things that we had talked about, that, I mean, I go on the backend of my websites and look and see what's working and what isn't and who's using what page and it allows it to be, to continue to grow and change as the needs change.
And that's important also from an SEO point of view. If somebody's thinking about moving to Chapacua and that they Google Chapacua, what do you want them to see at the top of the page?
This might be the bottom line, you're taking a flyer on $6,000 roughly, that this is gonna work and be something terrific and I'm sure you'll do a good job. I think we just have to figure out the management and administration of it and legal issues associated with it, but...
It feels like there should be a contract, not just an invoice.
No, I...
Oh, no, no, I have a contract.
I know a hundred percent. I'd agree with you.
Yeah, we...
I have a contract and I have NDA, I mean, I, you know, I work...
Yeah, I have a contract.
Yeah, we prepared, we should...
We drafted a resolution that contemplated that there would be a contract.
But we haven't seen the contract.
But the resolution was to pay this invoice, correct? I mean, I don't feel that we should pay an invoice until we enter into a contract.
Well, the way it was drafted and you can do it however you think is best was to delegate to the town administrator the responsibility of actually coming up with, it'll be a very short con... This could be done a couple of pages. And, but to delegate to her the tasks of putting that together, ultimately putting together some kind of rules with respect to content and management of the website.
But, but why not just do that upfront?
I don't know if all, all those decisions have been made yet. And if you want to have that come back to you to make those and to put all that in place, you can, or the thought was maybe you'd want to delegate that. Either way, it's really up to you.
I'm supportive of the concept. I don't object to that. I just, I agree with Ivy, just I want to know what I'm doing before I do it.
How long will it take to build?
It depends, cause it depends on how quickly feedback can be given and all of that. But I think probably this, I mean, to, once we get, what will, the way that, the way it works is we do a staging site that's not live to anybody. So we build it. That takes a lot of time. I work a lot on the beforehand, giving the programmers all the information and then they will build it. I, that, that usually takes about, with the size of this, it would be about two or three weeks. So, but there's a lot of work before that and then, once that happens, I give my first round of changes and then from there, when I'm comfortable with it, then I can show it to the powers that be and we can work on it from there. So once that, once we have something to look at, it really just depends on how close it is and how much work we have. But the initial, kind of the bulk of the work, I mean, I, to do a website like this, usually if I get feedback quickly, say, two months, three months, two to three months, depending on how quickly.
So I don't think it's gonna take us certainly that long to take a contract there. So the question is, are they not the, the, the four blocks that you're...
And who's reviewing the content to kind of approve what's going in there?
Well, that's part of what we have to, and that's something that came up in our conversation, which is why this is...
We have guidelines. Well, we would, we would adopt guidelines and the, the kind that would have to be consistent with the guidelines.
I just think, we could do this fairly quickly. I just think we just, why don't we, why don't we, I think we do this fairly quickly and we can get this moving, but if it takes a week or two weeks to put this pen to paper...
Yeah, might as well just get, we have time.
Just do it, yeah.
We do it as fast as we can.
But I'm fully supportive, I just want to know what's happening, who's responsible, how it's gonna happen.
But Nick, I, we raised the question, Lisa raised it last week at the Town Board meeting, about whether this, whether we could do this from a procurement perspective. So are we allowed to make a small purchase to develop this website or is this something we have to go out to bid for?
Cause it's over $6,000.
Well, it's over 3,000. 3,000 on this one?
Six is over here.
I honestly don't have, we'd defer to Rob on this.
It's professional services, in my opinion, and so, you know...
It is certainly professional services, yes. So it's not subject to the bidding requirements.
So you, you can go out for an RFP, you don't have to go out for a...
Oh, I don't, I don't want to go out for an RFP.
Right. No, I'm just, I want to make sure I asked my question before I did last week.
Yeah, well, hey, what else I talk about?
So, I'm sorry if you get misled, but it's not, it's not, it's not subject to bidding, it's under your procurement policy, it's RFP, so it's your discretion.
Great.
And I just, when we can, you know, the price that, it's usually the way it works is my programmers give me a price, I, this is a straight through so I don't think anybody else would be able to come in lower than that. I'm doing this all, you know...
I'm not, I'm not willing to...
No, 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 it's not, it's just making sure.
The process.
I know, and I understand the process, but I know the guidelines, so, but, you know... It's not that we want somebody else. I understand, I didn't take it that way, trust me, I'm not that sensitive.
We like people with ten good fingers.
And then just out of curiosity, is this logo decided upon? Are there other options?
So I have lots of options. These were the ones that we kind of narrowed it down to.
This one?
No, there were, no, here, I can show you. I have a whole bunch.
We don't need to see them now, I'm just...
Well, and I, you know, I can email them. I mean, we went through...
I fancy myself a logo, it's...
Right, we went through...
I'm just curious.
Lots. And lots. We went very modern, we did train, we did, this one I, this was, had a special place in my heart.
What is that? Go back, what is it?
I don't know why, this just speaks to me so much, but it's, it was still on the running. I just, I saw this like in the flags and all of that, you know, and it's a little bit different, it's a little bit more modern, but it's not too out there.
And also...
Cause if we're gonna do this and we want to get people involved and excited about it, I would even say maybe we pick our top five and let the town decide.
And that's fine with us.
Let the public decide.
Oh, that's so much fun, because people agree so easily.
Well, it can be, whoever gets the top votes.
But no, they're allowed to give a vote, but they're modeled to give a comment.
No comments, no votes.
Yeah, no.
That's only half the battle.
Whoever gets the top votes, you let people pick their favorite one out of five or 10, the top one wins.
How about this, you can't vote more than once. That's gonna be the problem.
There, there, there you go. There you go.
They have people voting a million times.
Um, here, I can see, I mean, so there's...
There's actually programs that you can use to, you know...
There are tons, oh, there's a, yeah.
Check out the address?
To, it change, it gives you, you can vote from the same computer more than once.
And then there, so we kind of narrowed it down from there and then so we ended with this. So this is, just to give you an idea of kind of how we see it, there's a T-shirt that we, there's a bag.
A tri-blade T-shirt? I don't, that's better than cotton.
What about, let me, let me just say something for Jeremy's, for Jeremy's sake, what about car magnets?
We do car magnets.
Ooh, I like that. I was waiting, I actually was in the...
You missed your opportunity.
I saw it.
That was, that was Tito.
Oh, hold on.
I guess the bottom line is, I don't have to, I don't have to see it. I'm not the, I'm not the, I think it's a great idea, I'm supportive. I just think we should have, know exactly what we're doing before we do it. That's the bottom line, right? So if it takes two weeks more, so we...
Yeah, we can prepare the contracts and the regulations.
So there's no issue, no one says, well, I thought this, I said that, just do it right away.
Look, just, just so you know, I mean, the reason it came like this is because we did talk about, you know, maybe spending up to X amount of dollars on this, including the block party, using the mitigation money. So that, that's the only reason it came, okay, here's an invoice. So it wasn't like we didn't talk about it, but, you know, I'm just saying, I don't want it to seem like it was sprung on us. We did talk about it, we just didn't get into the details. But now that we're getting into the details, let's just, you know, dot all the i's, cross the t's and do it that way.
Yeah, my support on...
All right, thanks Dana.
Thank you. No, 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 it's...
Could you make like a Mount Rushmore with the board members' heads?
Totally. That's gonna be the homepage.
I could have them on the banners. I like it. I knew, I knew you were, I just approved.
Use the head, click them on posts.
Those are bobbleheads.
Thinking darkboard.
Darkboard?
Thank you, and exactly, any questions, yeah, anytime.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sorry for interrupting you.
Okay, guys, now you're going to closed session.
Yep.
You grew a bobblehead.
I made one for my husband.
Did you? I made one, come in. Take the picture, well, it's like, any picture, so...
So motion to go back into executive session for advice of council and contracts and that was...
Advice of counsel.
No, it was separate.
For world's favor.
Aye.
Okay. Welcome everybody to our Town Board Work Session, Tuesday, October 16th, 2018. As a continuation, we had started earlier and here we are again, a few more people. So first thing we're going to talk about is Chapacua Station Plan Amendment and Clarification of Special Permit Conditions. And then after that, we're gonna jump into our Newcastle United for Youth Pride Survey results. So welcome, Tom. And we'll talk Chapacua Station. I don't know your name, I was...
Bruce.
Oh, sorry, Bruce.
That's all right.
So, just, just to refresh everyone's recollection, this is Swan's song. So he, he came to finish this one issue with the board and we are tremendously indebted to him for the time and guidance he gave us while we were in between building inspectors.
Thank you.
It's been good to be here. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we, we...
And I'm pleased for you that you have Tom.
As are we.
Very well served, so it's good.
So far, so good.
So on the...
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for that, yeah.
I'm assuming, this is about Conifer and the fact that they had a couple of changes come up that upon reading the SUP, it was clear that the language in there said, you've got to go back to the Town Board for approval of these changes. So one of them had to do with the change in the location of the gate on the pedestrian bridge and the other one had to do with raising the roof, just slightly increasing the pitch on the roof to accommodate shop drawings which they had received for the elevator that is being part of their building construction. Did you, you all got the letter from Conifer, correct? Did you see the drawings that they submitted as well? Do you have any questions about what, what they are, what they're about? The gate has not moved that much, it's moved five foot, it changed.
The gate was confusing things, I couldn't tell from the drawing.
Yeah, I couldn't either.
Come again?
The gate was more confusing in the drawing.
Well, I made up some copies that'll perhaps help you understand a little bit.
The roof, I was either here nor there, it's not...
So here are a couple.
I had a question about that too, actually.
The first one shows where it currently, whereas the plans approved it and then the other one, the second drawing shows where it's, they want to move it to. And as Brian Donato explained in his letter to you, it was precipitated by the not moving the water connection so that they can now access the water connection through a hatch in the bridge, which previously would have been right underneath the gate. So they moved the gate five feet, one inch closer to the building and now they can have a hatch in the bridge to give them that access.
Manual cover.
That is correct.
I'm still confused.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's really a hatch in that it opens up to an open area below that then gives them the access to the top of the vault where the water connection is.
I'm, I'm so confused. Where, I just, I'm not...
I started reading it.
Where is the bridge? Which of these squiggly lines is the bridge?
The portion, this is just showing you a portion, yes.
The whole thing is the bridge.
This is the bridge.
The building is here and the bridge is going in this direction and here's the, the wall along one side.
So old, old bridge. Well, this is the pedestrian bridge.
Correct. But the bridge that you cross over in the traffic is here, is here. That is correct.
Yes, because the bridge we cross is here. So, and here, where does it end here? Right here?
That, this is the stone, the, the wall on the bridge, right here.
Got it.
Okay?
So it's initially supposed to be right here?
That's where it was on the original plans and it's moved, you'll see, is to eight foot 10 and three quarter inches, whereas it had been three foot nine and five eighths.
And is this a problem at all for fire, anybody that has to get in here?
It doesn't change that at all, because it's still, the, the, the gate is staying exactly the same.
It's just literally pushing it back.
It has evolved.
Just pushing it close to the structure.
That is exactly right. But the wording in the resolution says that any and all changes have to come to you.
And the, the thing is though that, I mean, I know that's the wording in the resolution, but some of these changes, wouldn't some of these changes typically just be handled at the staff level? Like, some of these are sort of technical type of things.
Immaterial changes.
Well, that's, that's...
I understand material changes, but some of these are like just...
And that's why we're here to speak to that also, right, yeah.
Because technically we don't need to see every little change that...
And hence we, we submitted some wording that would change that, but we need to have that in order to be able to effectively enforce the, the special use permit.
Who makes the determination about what is and isn't a material change? Is that you?
That would be myself, yes. If it's something I felt that I did not want to make a decision, it would go to the Town Board.
If I'm being...
Give an example of what that might be, I'm sorry.
If they want to change window locations, add windows, do something from the facade of the building that's going to demonstrate something different that was agreed upon, that would be something that I would not make the call on. It would ask upon the board to make the call.
Anything that obviously, that you think might impact safety?
Safety, I would, I would make a call on, but we're not talking about safety issues. We're talking more about cosmetic issues, about the presence of the building would prompt them to come back to talk to the board to say, we're gonna change the appearance. If it comes to safety, as the building inspector, I'm going to address them. If it comes to minor details about construction of the building, you know, the fine elements of the construction, I will address them. But it's more the, the viewing of the building, if you will, that you would have to, the request would come to the board.
Or the function of the building.
Or the height.
Height, function, you know, cosmetics, something that's already been agreed to upon, that it has to appear to be a certain way by documentation. If it comes down to, is the wall three inches or four inches, that should not have to come to the board to make a determination on.
So it doesn't change, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It doesn't change your analysis, analysis at all, it just makes it more efficient when it's something we really don't need to put a pin on.
We have an efficiency then, cause right now we don't, because the verbiage says all changes come before the board. So no matter what the change is, how de minimis, we still have to present the...
You gotta slept down here at nine o'clock to go over nothing.
Well, it's important, cause the verbiage says it's important.
I understand that, but it's something you could do on your own without us...
The office could do this without a problem.
I think we agree that those kind of small changes should be in your vision.
And the new provision...
On a project of this nature, how many of these types of field changes would you typically expect to see?
There could be hundreds of small changes.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Now, let's be clear, at the end, these will all be documented with an as-built drawing that states all the changes so that there will be clarification and documentation to substantiate them. But it comes down to, do you as the board want to hear every mind-made change or do you need to hear every mind-made change?
And in your experience, this is too constrictive, it's generally not this way?
It's very constrictive. It's usually, there is a threshold before we address a board with a change. The nuts and bolts of a project should not be talked about in lengthy meetings.
Gotcha.
That only happens once in a lifetime.
That's no concern.
And this requirement came from where? Just, it was 2013 when this...
That's right, in the original special permit resolution, there's a provision in it that essentially says every change, no matter how big, how small, comes back before the Town Board, it actually mentions field changes. So we're trying to apply some common sense and, and open that up a little bit. There's another concern as well, which is if we're talking about dozens... There's another concern as well, which is if we're talking about dozens, hundreds of changes, and we have this cumbersome process, then changes that actually might be beneficial, that you would want them to make, they'll look at them and say, it's not worth the effort, so just do it the original way, we don't want that.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we have to waste your time anymore.
And the roof line that changed, is it affecting the, is that affecting the visual height at all?
It affects the height, but it's very small.
Not of this whole building, because it's just a very small portion of it. It's only that part, uh, the roof that's over the elevator, which extends over a little bit more area, did you see that, or, or not, here? I made up some other, some copies.
If you're actually opening the, in the, to the effort, then flip back and forth.
Did you see it, so, okay, okay, so you, you.
But I, I can never tell exactly what it's gonna, I mean, I think it's probably fine, but I, I mean.
I'm looking at this in its, its source.
It all looks, it looks the same.
The, the, sometimes this section helps, because that, that's particularly hard to do, but if you take a look at the section, this is the proposed, and then before is the, is the original, okay? And I, I highlighted what the change is in the, in the height, but then what they were doing with the roof pitch here, okay? And it's, it's a de minimis change, I mean, that's what the, the, the pages, I mean, you'd almost say, hey.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a waste, yeah, I mean, it, it's a time.
But it's a change.
Yep.
So what are we gonna do about to um, to avoid these in the future, we're gonna change uh?
So, for next week, you'd have on your agenda a resolution that if there are any more questions on the two changes that you're requesting, approving those, and also amending the language of the special use permit to allow for the building inspector to make uh, decisions independently in the nature of the field change.
Right. Okay.
And remind me in your memo, what, what's the status of the project right now, it was ninety percent of the pilings have been driven or something?
Correct, they actually have just one more, the, on the north end of the building, what they refer to as the J-line, uh, to do. So, they're, they're working on that now.
I spent a lot of time.
Okay, and you, and you have that wording in, in the memo that, that I sent, so you can read that and.
I think council's gonna, you know, they're going to deal with that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry to recognize you. Okay, sorry to keep you waiting, Newcastle United for Youth, good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we using the projector or no, this is gonna be the, this is the presentation?
Yeah, we're, we're not. We're gonna make up time.
No, that's fine, it's perfect, thank you.
Yes, we're. We're gonna help you out, yeah.
Good, thank you.
So.
I didn't get one, do you have two?
There aren't, I mean.
There's more coming.
Oh, oh yeah, okay.
So, we just really wanted to come and say, basically, thank you, because the town has been such a great support for us. I don't know if you guys remember, but you're our fiscal agent, Jill is our project administrator, Rob Deary runs all of the money, and James McHugh, so um, Jill and Lauren, and Rob Deary, and James, and Barbara have all been incredibly helpful in getting our um, coalition running smoothly, um, also the police department, the rec department, Chief Ferry, um, Dan Carrato, yes.
It has been more collaborative, I mean, than we could have ever envisioned, it has really been true coalition work with this town, so it's fantastic.
So, we did our second set of data, and we give it to you, you know, we don't have to go through it, because it kind of is pretty self-explanatory. Um, the school district did do grades eight through twelve, every grade took the survey. This is just the snapshot of what they call the four core measures, which are the real lesson bolts of what you have to do to keep the grant. Um, we have a lot more data that we collected, and um, last week you guys approved an evaluation contract with New York Medical College, and so there, she's an epidemiologist, they're gonna be sort of going through some of the more granular data with us, and helping us really decide what we're gonna focus on in the years to come.
Some of the statistics are interesting, you have a huge discrepancy between the eighth and twelfth grade, which, which makes sense, because we're younger and more impressionable.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great, isn't it? Yeah.
But that, that number, I, I'd be curious, when you're looking at marijuana perception, um, I'm curious what that number, how that translates to other communities in the area, just across the US, in metro area, how varies in North Dakota, as it varies to here.
There's nothing special about us.
That's what I figured.
We are very typical, I mean, it's. Well, of a, an affluent suburban community.
But even the city too, you know, I think even affluent or, or not affluent, it's just such a common.
Yeah, um, the one thing we, we did learn a lot, um, doing the survey, the data that's in the survey, while it's, you can sort of look at the way it trends, um, you can also see, we didn't have a great return rate in terms of the seniors, so actually, I would caution you, if you look at those numbers and you see a jump,
They're skewed.
They're probably a little skewed low.
Yeah.
Even so, it would be very interesting to see.
And so, it's about our colleagues out there now.
So these are the kids that showed up, these are the seniors.
Exactly, it would be interesting to see, just in general, in general, what the eighth graders today, it will be as twelfth graders tomorrow,
Yes, so we, right, so we're gonna get to see that trajectory, and, and we did hire, we did hire, uh, starting this year, a middle school prevention specialist, who's gonna be working um, part-time in the schools, and really because we see that our eighth graders are doing, you know, we have a great health program in the high, in the middle schools, our kids are really, um, they're really taking these messages in eighth grade, and then you see that something happens, obviously, when they get to the high school, it's a different culture, their perceptions change, so um, we're hoping to give the kids, as they're leaving eighth grade, some more skills, so that when they get into that transition into ninth grade, that they might carry some more protective factors with them.
Or really, and, or really just to also become a part of um, a group of kids that think, um, think about making healthy choices, so that when they move to the, the high school, they might also continue in that group, because we have a student assistance counselor, and we have a SAD club. Um, but it's not really all that cool in high school to affiliate yourself with that, but if they had already drank the Kool-Aid in middle school, they might be, feel a little bit more ready to move on with it, um, so that's our.
And the survey was cigarettes divided as tobacco cigarettes, I know you guys have done a lot of really good work around vaping.
Well, thank you guys, but you've done that.
Do we have that sort of data?
We have statistics on that for our district.
That's a place where the survey administration got a little confused, there is, there is some data on vaping. Um, we were hoping to get even more data, because the survey instrument is a little um.
Light, it's like a, a little behind the times.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the four core measures, that they should probably get out cigarettes and put in the vaping.
Yeah, right.
Right, or make the definition of that better.
And there are added questions, but there was, because they're added questions, they're not embedded in the physical survey, it's an extra piece of paper, there was, there was some survey administration problem. We're gonna just learn from that moving forward, and when we talk with the school about how, it, it will, won't happen again, just because we have a different administration that's very behind the work as well, so that's fantastic. There was, there was some problems with it.
Alright, so we were hoping to get that data, um, we just, we got some, but I'm not sure it's really, we're not really sure how good it is.
Yeah.
It's a stretch, but you know.
It can die at our work for sure, I mean, we, I mean, I think even the anecdotal.
Absolutely, yeah.
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 It happens now.
There's no question, there's no question.
We got it embedded, yeah. Yeah. Um. Just curious.
And the, you know, the survey even just, you know, it just, that, that sort of stuff moves on, and so it really hasn't been embedded in any of these surveys that you, you have to do these.
I suspect by the next time, we have to do it as fast, it will be great.
Yeah, right.
Everything is captured, you don't have vapor.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, and the other part, there was something else I was gonna say, just the word I was thinking about. Oh, and so this summer, we had a great turnout, um, we, because you guys don't meet as much, we get to use your space, and we had twenty-two summer interns, and we had three kids who went to a summer, what they call Youth to Youth Conference, which is about positive, healthy choices, um, and so we have these twenty-five kids, and some of them are still sticking around, but they did some great work, they were at the community concerts. Um, they helped out, they ran a little thing for kids, uh, in the on-the-go camp, they pushed in and did a little vaping.
Are having our fall festival, you know?
Yeah.
We will be, we have, we'll be at the fall festival.
Will be at the fall festival. Excellent. We were at Community Day, and some kids were there, some kids were at the fall festival, so.
Yeah, so.
Some concerts you guys were there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had a booth for two of the concerts, um, and so we have some kids who, you know, they did some great, some research for us, they ran little events, they hopefully will do more, I think they're, some of them are interested in working with middle schoolers, so, um, we're around, but thank you so much for all the support and the, you know, Rob and James have to really work with all of our paperwork.
If you guys bring, if you guys bring double bubble, you can come anywhere.
You, do you want some, we, we can bring you a bucket.
A tub.
I know, you added that, we need to.
You know, you need healthy lungs to blow a good bubble.
Yeah, that was, that was our, we did, yeah, we, we learned though that the parents really don't like sugar gum, so, we've kind of forgotten that, that most parents are like, yeah.
Yeah, we like it more than cigarettes and alcohol.
Um, and then we're gonna have a speaker coming for parents.
Sure, and the baseball players are using that as a.
Oh yeah, what are you, uh, yeah, what about speakers this year?
Yeah, we have a speaker coming November, the evening of November thirteenth.
Thirteenth, and then for academic.
Doctor Amelia Aria, who's a professor at University of Maryland, who will be talking on the um, effects of.
The impact on academic performance, uh, as a result of smoking marijuana.
Alright.
She's done a lot of great research, and she presents it in a very palatable way, and um, really accessible, and of course, because it's on academic performance, we think it's gonna be very.
Well, you know, it's very interesting, because you know, I, I come from a different perspective to doing defense work than doing the prosecutor, but you, in the city, it's, when I say it's decriminalized, personally, you smell it, I mean, I smell it, I walk through an elevator in the courthouse, it's, you get high. Um, but, all kidding aside, the way the Brooklyn DA's office does it, you get arrested for marijuana, you get deep with DP, declined to prosecute before you even get to court. It's just, it's a non-issue. So when you have someone coming to speak about the concerns of marijuana, how it impacts your ability to, academically, yet you're getting another message from law enforcement in the city of New York, and I'm not here to opine on who's right, who's wrong, and you know, there's some probably, some arguments on each side about decriminalizing and, and the, obviously the impact, but it's, 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 it's almost a non-issue in the city. Right or wrong, I mean, you can get arrested for marijuana, it just, nothing happens.
So, but the thing is, if it's, I might, I might advocate it should be legal, but maybe if it was legal, like what you see happens with alcohol in Europe, you know, the kids just don't abuse it as much, because.
There's a lot of different conversations, I'm just saying, to each point, you know, so much saying, it's impacting your academic ability and your ability to think cognitively, but at the same time, you have another message in the city.
Well, that's, that's why there's, that it's, there are so many mixed messages, and that's why you see, I mean, based on legalization in other states, that's when kids' perception of risk has really started to plummet, because they think, well, obviously, it's legal in other states, therefore.
And perception of risk goes down, use goes up, that doesn't necessarily mean it's a, it needs to be criminal, but it will still be an act.
Well. Well, like, whatever it may be, it's, it's.
Right, right. You know, that's the thing.
It's, it's consistency.
So. Right, but so the, you know, the, you know, there's a lot of data out there about some of the risk factors, and so um, Doctor will speak to parents, and, or adults the night of the thirteenth, and then, um, she'll be pushing in, her speaking, she's gonna be speaking, what, three times during the day, and the science teachers will, you know, if they decide, they'll bring classes in to see her, so um, we did that last spring with another speaker, um, and science teachers opted, so not every kid gets to see them, but it's not a disrupt, it, first of all, it's not putting a speaker with a hundred, or two hundred, or five hundred kids, I mean, they just kind of check out, it's much smaller groups.
Minimizes the effectiveness anyways.
And it's mostly just like a, a more science-based, um, which they find, the kids find more palatable.
They like, they like having the facts.
Yeah.
They can hear the facts and the science behind it, that's um.
Rather than a finger wagging, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's.
And that, I mean, and that's consistent, in a way, because they're not, not criminalizing, we don't wanna, we don't wanna wag fingers, we just wanna impart information so people can make healthy choices for themselves.
Right.
It's kind of, it's kind of our.
So, thank you, and we'll let you guys continue with your work, if you ever have any questions, or, you know, we're always happy to come back, or you can email us or call us, but we're always appreciative of the town and all of our other coalition partners.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for.
We encourage you to stay and watch the rest of this, starting session.
And we have, and the volunteer fair is coming up, I know you guys are involved in that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're there.
A Sunday.
When is that, uh?
Sunday.
Is Sunday? Is Sunday?
This Sunday.
I'm looking at it, I'll send you a draft of that letter from.
Come for lunch.
Yes, come for lunch, the food is always good, and uh, it's great for kids of all ages. Good night.
Good night.
Bye, thank you so much.
Good night guys, thank you.
Okay, what else we got?
Is it something I said at?
That's it?
So, should we go back to the, the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, so what do you wanna go to first, um?
You just start at the top, let me, it seems.
Close to the half, um.
More out of whack now. We did that.
No, we did it in the. Bob's come in and explained it.
Yeah, or you wanna do grade crossing, whatever you want, but we need to, to just.
Yep, so, in your agenda packet, um, and I provided to the board were some resolutions of the improvements at the grade crossing, so in connection with the Chapala Crossing project, um, the residential project is still being reviewed by the planning board, and recycling subdivision approval, retail is under construction, and SG is getting permits from DOT to do the improvements. Um, they're required to do improvements at the intersection of Roanoke Road and one seventeen, and during its review, the DOT is requesting that there be certain improvements made down at the Sawmill River Crossing Intersection. And there's a map that I provided to the board that details, um, what those changes were, these were discussed, um, initially in some, some of the earlier secret documents, but these plans are now more advanced and being finalized, and DOT is looking at it comprehensively, so what they've asked is for the town board to require the applicant to post a bond to ensure the completion of that work, and because it's still during the design phase, the DOT is requesting that the town require and hold on to that performance bond. And it's a performance bond in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars to fund the improvements at the Sawmill River Parkway Interchange. Uh, the city town engineer has reviewed that, uh, the cost estimate, he's added a contingency, he's increased it to what he reflects it will be, and there's, so for the town board's considerations, there's two resolutions in one document. One resolution is to authorize the supervisor to sign an agreement with SG called the cash bond agreement, whereby those funds will be held by the town. The town is not doing the work, the expectation is that SG will do that work, but in the event they do not, and are required to complete the improvements down at the Sawmill by the earlier of, um, August thirty-first of next year, or the issuance of a building permit for the residential project. So they have to do the work, in the event they don't, then the town has the funds available to go out and hire a contractor to do that work at SG's expense using those funds. In the event that, when DOT issues the permit for the work at the Sawmill, that it's found that there's more work to be required, and it's more than the six hundred thousand, SG has to increase that escrow, and it's a cash bond, not a bond, it's a cash bond. They have to increase that amount being held by the town.
And that will be in the agreement.
That is in the agreement, yes, and there's a whole time period and a whole step, that they provide with an estimate, we then look at it, and within two weeks, it's gotta be refunded.
And the contractor, it was just consistent, the contractor also have to post the performance bond, another layer of protection, right, the construction company. DOT is gonna require.
DOT is gonna require that the actual contractor do the work, yes.
To do a.
Correct. So, so to be clear, very simply to be clear, this is more improvements than initially required, uh, that are, and in fact, it's an extra lane, and, among other things, going southbound, making a left onto the Sawmill from Roanoke, uh, among other things, but additionally, Bob Seoli reviewed this, he, I think, went up more than a hundred percent in terms of cost to make sure that we have built-in protection, dollar-wise, but even if it's not the, the right number, they're on the hook, meaning some have refilled, not us. That is correct, right, the town is just telling DOT that we're guarant, we're guaranteeing and enforcing it through this plan, and the town has a number of different avenues to ensure that the work gets done. This is a win for us, hopefully a big win, but it's a win for us in terms of traffic. Yep, what it's doing in summary is coming. Well, it's better, it's looking better than it was before, and DOT, DOT is really our partner to make it happen. So going west, coming down Roanoke Road to the Sawmill from a high school, it's adding two dedicated left turn lanes, and making sure that the through lane is now a dedicated through lane. And coming east, it's making a dedicated, um, left turn lane, and then a dedicated forward or right turn lane. So, this will do the, from the traffic engineers and DOT's perspective, um, be an improvement to what is there presently. Probably a big relative word, but. Yeah, it's making a, a bad situation less bad.
Seriously, can we make sure it's not gonna be an improvement, because you can have as many lanes as you want, if the, if the width of the lanes to actually get over the railroad track stays at its current narrow form, that only allows one lane through, basically. that only allows one lane through basically, sometimes two at a time, it's not gonna make a difference. You could have fifty lanes with turning lanes, it's not gonna make a difference because they're all gonna meet where they can't get over the train tracks. So that to me is a huge miss that they forgot.
And Bob heard that and he's gonna take that coming back, yes.
I don't think anybody.
I just wanna make sure.
I don't think anybody's, to be honest, I don't think they're missing, I mean, D O T has reviewed these plans, the Summit Greenfield's uh traffic engineers reviewed these plans. The person, the engineer who did the whole preemption, who hired by Metro North reviewed these plans.
I get it, but that doesn't look like it's a change.
And we're gonna have a consultant review the plans too. So there is.
So I just wanna make sure it's not missed.
Even if they could go into four lanes, it's supposed to be going into.
We can take the work out.
Yes, there's a change, because, right, you're not gonna back up this much.
Exactly.
No, no, you're not gonna back up this much, it's gonna be better.
No, that's gonna, that's gonna give you access to have more cars on that side between the tracks and the Sawmill.
Yes.
As long as they can get over the tracks is the point, right now they can't.
Well, they will, they.
More of them will be able to get over the track at one time.
They're gonna.
But you said you don't go there that often, trust me.
No, I do go there, I go there enough to understand that you can.
You can.
No, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna be warning that, that's why they have stormwater improvements, they're gonna be.
Can't go through. Okay, because it doesn't look like that on the plan, so I just wanna make sure they're not missing it.
If you only have two lanes, suddenly you have four lanes, you have twice as many cars that can go.
No, they're gonna be warning that, that's why they're having store, that's why they're having these stormwater, that's why D P's involved. Because they're creating more.
And again, it could be that there's more, more improvement.
Yeah, obviously they do.
They're creating more pervasive surface.
Well, that I know, but I just wanna make sure.
Yes, it could be more, so it could be more of a.
It could be more of a.
Oh, that's a bit.
Yes.
Yes, 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 this is.
The railroad tracks are not actually shown on that map.
No matter what, the bottom line is it's a better situation than was agreed upon before we were involved in the agreement process.
Right, they're gonna do, yeah, they're gonna be getting rid of also that um little grassy island that's on the Sawmill.
Let's see if this guy's gonna do anything.
On the east.
On both sides, actually.
Yes.
On both sides.
Okay, so we have resolutions for you to act on when you get to the end of the committee.
Not that you guys care my side, but it's a big problem in the morning.
Okay.
Care about your side.
You guys don't care my side.
Your side, Paul.
I'm surprised they said that a right turn lane wasn't gonna make a difference coming your way over the Sawmill. Yeah. So.
Because people don't, the the reality is, and I know it's diverse from speaking, you know, from living there, people don't, if you're gonna go south on the, on the Sawmill, you don't get on over there, you'd go into, you'd go towards town.
Gonna go over the bridge downtown?
Yeah.
No, you go, you go by Douglas, you get it on by Douglas, it's like, oh, even your navigation takes you that way. And if you're going north, you're going down by Mount Piscopo. I never get on, the only, the only way, the only time I go to exit thirty-three is when um, you, sometimes I take it to get off the highway, but if I wanna go west, I mean, if I wanna go east or west, right, I go across.
Alright, so I, I, well, your.
Okay.
And that's what most of the traffic is doing, you know, the traffic engineers, they tell you.
Right.
Joe, what's that?
Because that's the only part you get across, I'm like, fine, I'm.
Great, just nice.
So we have a revised policies for town Newcastle, this is the first time you're seeing the revised, some of the suggestions for the revised policies. Um, it's not to be voted on tonight, I just wanted to introduce it to the board. We um, uh, we've asked our council to go through it, some of the policies, like the one that was approved last week are due to a change in um uh the law. Uh, there is a uh, a hearing evaluation policy that is an OSHA requirement that we do not have before, that will be um submitted to the board as well. And just modifications to some of the other um policies and procedures that we had. And we think that it was a good time to have council just go through them all, make sure that they're all up to date and compliant with the current law.
Or add the education requirement.
Yes, and we're adding that, so hopefully next time we'll um, we'll be able to go over that. Um, but that's certainly something that we should resolve by the end of the year. The next thing is um authorization to uh attend a conference, is this for Lauren from Lauren?
Yeah, so Lauren's actually not here tonight because she's uh, she drove to Brockport to um attend a manager's conference. Very interesting, they were having a um, a presentation on uh withering volunteerism and the impact on local fire districts, volunteer fire districts and volunteer ambulance scores. And uh it's very timely and uh she was interested in going and I'm really interested to hear what they have to say and the suggestions that that they're gonna be making tough so that we can do some planning going forward. Um, it's uh, she's staying with family and it's a twenty-five dollar fee in reimbursement for just her knowledge.
Is she gonna um, I mean technically it's obviously a separate fire district, so is she gonna share?
Right.
Yeah, no, no, I've, whatever information that come back with, same thing with C D A, but it um, it, it is a tremendous question mark for our town and actually daunting for budgeting purposes going forward if we have to go to partially paid.
The cost will be phenomenal, phenomenal.
Yeah, I was sitting across the table this morning with a guy who was.
Yeah.
Uh, and I have to tell you, quite a few of the.
Yeah, and he was telling me, Arisia was going crazy towards his towns.
It's, it's really, um, it's very problematic. And for those of us who live within the um Newcastle Fire District, if you got their latest fundraiser,
Yeah.
their donations are down by eighty percent.
Yeah.
So um, that's, that's pretty daunting.
Yeah.
When I saw that, I said to Lauren, maybe we do wanna go to this.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where she is, um, legal bills we've already resolved, um.
But they don't want the money, they really want the volunteers.
Yeah, they, they, you know.
I mean, they just don't want the money, but they want the, they want.
Volunteers, but you know, that all has to do with having the building and having amenities and all this other stuff. It's something that hopefully, Newcastle will be able to uh, to resolve sooner rather than later. Um, there is, there should be a um uh auction results in your packets, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the work session, so hats up to Jeremy, here we go again. Um, uh, this is for um uh some D P W equipment, um, and actually one old.
Who should have bought a plow?
Hmm?
They'd want a heavy plow, I don't know what it looks like.
Yeah, a, a, yeah, a sixteen-year-old rusted out, and God bless them, whatever they want for. Um, just to let the, the board know, lots six through eleven are being rejected at this point, um, or offset prices two hundred fifty dollars. So they have an option to either go for that, and if they do, that's fine, otherwise uh we'll pull them back and we'll just, we'll get more than this for uh for scrap metal.
Right.
Okay, but um we would like a resolution just to uh be able to um accept these results and so we can get them sold and you cash on hand.
Cool, yeah.
That's so resolved.
Yeah. Okay, um, there is one other item that I.
Years ago.
Yeah, when it wasn't, that we, there was, had not been auctioning for a while, too.
We actually talked about this last week um in personnel. And um I have a letter of resignation, I'm gonna ask the board to accept tonight.
Are we done now with our, we?
Yeah, we've got, we have resolutions.
Alright, I move to authorize Lauren Cascio, an assistant to the town administrator, to attend the New York State C M A two thousand eighteen seminar, sustainability series at the student Brockport, one sixty-one Chestnut Street, Rochester, New York. Uh, that is actually today from nine to three, so she's actually done at the student rate.
No, 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 it's tomorrow, she drove up to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, it says Wednesday, but I was testing it, it was totally testing.
Lauren, come back.
At the student rate member fee of twenty-five dollars plus mileage reimbursed in three hundred forty-five miles.
Second.
Ball of favor?
Aye, I move to approve the payment of claim as amount of three hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred forty-four dollars, twenty-two cents. Listen on the summary pre-check writing report, detailed voucher detail report, each prepared on October sixteen, two thousand eighteen, checks will be issued. And mail to each claimant listed on Wednesday, October seventeenth of this year.
Second.
Ball of favor?
Aye. Uh, I move to approve the following, let it be resolved that the supervisor is authorized to execute the following petition um in reference to the Solo Valley Sanitary Sewer District uh for property located at thirty-two West Way here in Chappaqua, Newcastle, as identified further in this um, identified further. Um, town board concludes that because the property is not receiving services from the Sawmill Valley Sewer District, nor is there any likelihood of the property receiving such services in the future. Uh, and the property is located more than a hundred feet from the nearest sewer, said property would benefit permit removal from the Solo Valley, uh, Solo Valley Sanitary Sewer District. Uh, therefore, the town of Newcastle hereby petition to West Kentucky Board of Legislators uh pursuant to the resolution duly adopted by Newcastle Town Board to remove this particular property as reflected herein, um, and all the steps necessary to effectuate such removal.
Second, ball of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna finish it, I move to accept the results of lots one, two, three, four, five and twelve of the online auction conducted by Auction International with end on October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, as reflected below. Uh, it is fully resolved, the town board hereby agrees to reject the current bids for lots six, seven, eight, nine, ten and eleven. Less bidders agreed to raise each of their bids respectively to two hundred fifty bucks.
Second.
Ball of favor?
Aye.
I don't know if anyone can read that one, and then we have the two.
Uh, I move to uh second, I'm, pardon, I moved to second.
Sorry, my bike.
I move to uh, accept.
Accept. I don't even know it, I just have to know what.
Oh, listen to Brian Roth, effective October sixteen, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Ball of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you have two on S G, you wanna read?
I'll read by all means.
You just read the where the.
Go for it, you put those to Jeremy's.
No, I want you to do the best of it, go ahead.
You just do a resolve there, or you want me to summarize it and then you can move in second?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, resolution authorizing the supervisor to sign New York Hitchcar Transportation Perm thirty-three Commercial Access Highway Work Permit Application. Um, but whereas is recite the factual situations that S G is doing certain developments for its um, its residential component of the project, that um there are certain improvements being required by the D O T pursuant to a plan as identified, but referred to as the Sawmill River Road improvements. And that D O T has requested the town become a co-applicant for the Commercial Access Highway Work Permit required for the S N R improvements. And that S G has agreed to post a cash bond with the town in an amount sufficient to cover the cost. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town board of town Newcastle hereby authorizes the supervisor to sign N Y S D O T Perm thirty-three Commercial Access Highway Work Permit Application for the purposes set forth herein along with all other documents necessary to effectuate the purpose of a resolution subject to the submitted cash bond agreement executed by S G along with payment to the town of a requisite amount pursuant to the cash bond agreement.
Which is six hundred thousand dollars.
Some.
Yes.
Second.
Ball of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second resolution is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the cash bond agreement in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars with S G Chappaqua V L L C. Um, whereas is recite what I just said previously, that S G has agreed to uh fund and perform these improvements being required by D O T, that should those improvements, which are still in the design phase, increase in cost, the cash bond will be increased. And that these improvements will be completed by the earlier of August thirty-first, twenty nineteen, or the issuance of the first uh building permit for the residential component of the project. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Board of Town Newcastle hereby authorizes the acceptance of the aforementioned cash bond agreement and as it may be modified, it be inferred or resolved that the Town Board of Town Newcastle hereby authorizes supervisor or designated to sign the cash bond agreement along with all other documents necessary to effectuate the purpose of a resolution subject to minor modifications to the cash bond agreement and payment to the town of a requisite amount, which the amount is subject to review and approval by the town engineer who approval of the town attorney as to form and substance.
Some of those.
Second, ball of favor?
Aye.
So I seconded it. This is, so that was all, that was it?
Yes.
Alright, wait, um, so. No, let's put it on the next one. Okay. So uh, I handed out to everybody, this is each one of the um, the responses for the R F P on our private consulting. If you can just, let's put them, it would be, um, it's really your choice. I can take and set up um appointments with all of them to come in and interview with the board, only some of them. Why don't you review them and let me know what you think?
And can you also ask, I know she's doing it anyway, but ask Sabrina for a summary and her recommendations as well?
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, she hasn't.
I'm sorry, who did? Really?
We should, we should plan this for next week, is that, that's the.
I feel like cover. Um, well, the, how long was next week, great, I'll give you this one second.
Interesting.
White cover.
Is that we have scheduled, um.
Yeah.
I mean, I can put it off a little bit.
I like this one, it's nice cover, it's thin.
Yeah, but I think they gave us a uh, hmm. Okay, so um.
So I'm, I'm sorry, some of these have rate cards and some of them don't.
They all should have, so that we had asked for rates on all of them, so that's one of the two, go back and come from about.
Shouldn't we be evaluating them without the rates?
No, we should, the rates are important.
No, no.
Because typically you evaluate um based on the technical scores and then you open your cost bid separately, so that you're.
It's really how the board wants to do it, you.
I mean.
We've not done it that way in the past, though.
So do, are we getting a separate cost?
I don't know, I.
I don't know why Kipley Horned didn't provide, we'll have to ask him for it, the other two have it contained within the proposal.
I mean, it just depends on how you're gonna evaluate, or, or, do we?
Well, is this something we think the town, or is this something that would be a reimbursable cost to us or?
It did, uh, it both.
No, I think it's gonna be both.
It's gonna be both.
Hopefully we find out by next week.
Depends what they're looking at.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yes. Um, okay, so um, so next week, uh, we were.
Next night is the best, but we all have that.
Hmm.
You said very.
Next week.
Well, I was thinking about bringing in um Bob Seoli to come in with Marion Papa from the county.
Yes, because it's not always the best.
Who talked about the um, was gonna give us the maps for the sewer, the proposed sewer expansion of one twenty and what they had planned. Um, so that the board could have a, a question and answer with the county insofar as, and what they had planned, what was the, their vision of taking and extending it and what would it be, mean for the local districts? Um, I thought also we could talk to the board about what that lower, what that local district might look like.
Mm-hmm.
So, planning going forward, if um the trunk line is expanded, that opens up the possibility of creating local districts, local sewer districts for areas. So, um, we would then be installing sanitary sewer lines to houses, we'd be replacing um existing water mains because our infrastructure is about the same age as what's downtown. Um, we would take that opportunity to invite Con Ed to come in and talk about, maybe perhaps installing um gas mains if at all possible, um, and then sidewalks, and then repave those areas. And the idea is, is that you set up some sort of staging, um, and a plan going forward. So that in five years, you talk about, um, you know, this area and we map it out and we have meetings with those residents and we s, we try to give them a preliminary cost so that they understand what the costs are. And if fifty-one percent of those residents deem that this is something that they'd like to go forward with, we'll pursue it. And if not, that's fine.
Sorry, I missed the first part of this conversation, what's the next step on this?
Oh, I'm sorry, so um we were just talking about what I had scheduled for next Tuesday, twenty-third.
Oh, next week, we have that conversation, oh, good, good, good.
Yeah, so that's what I'm hoping for, but this is, you know, this is a great conversation. If we put it off a week, it isn't the worst thing in the world, it's just that this is really.
Yeah, that's right, that's immediate.
That's more imperative.
So um, I'm gonna um, I'm gonna check with this and see if it's something that we can put over uh to November just to let the board know that on November seventh, um, we are going to be having um a meeting with Pleasantville at the New Water Treatment Plant.
Is that at the sixth?
Um, we have, I mean, that's gonna be the seventh, it's the day after Election Day, so it's a Wednesday.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so this is an annual meeting we have with them, uh, we get a report from the United Board regarding the state of the plant, uh, there are tours if necessary.
I'm sorry, I love the water treatment.
Fabulous.
That's short of sarcasm.
What time is it?
So the tour is gonna be at six, the uh, the, the meeting is gonna be at six forty-five.
No, I'm serious. The best field trip I have ever.
And we're gonna have a, we'll probably have a working.
Six forty-five, you said?
Yeah, we're gonna have a, probably a working dinner with the, uh, the person.
Can we take the electric shovel to get there?
Oh, what a good idea.
We, we usually have delicious sandwiches from uh.
Well, we have to do some gluten-free stuff.
Yes.
No, we get it usually from uh A and S, it's so good.
A and S, but we can do that, huh? That's, it's all good. Um, and then um, yeah, so we would probably meet from six forty-five to seven thirty right in there.
Right, that's a guest.
And then probably have an eight fifteen, eight thirty start back in town. So.
That's a long night.
Yeah, it is, it's a long night, we also will be setting the uh, the public hearing for the budget. So um, any last decisions on the preliminary are gonna be on for the twenty-third, so um, Rob Geary's gonna be sending you some emails.
You could take the, you could take the.
Want to drive? You can?
So we have some information. Okay, but I'm gonna try to get these people to start this for next week, okay, okay.
Did you see the, did you find your C L?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, um.
Anything else, anyone wants to?
Okay.
Do you suggest, I think we're.
I move to make Martin Wilber the official uh reporter of Newcastle Town Board.
Second.
Ball of favor, favor?
That is kind of looked at.
Yeah, we gotta go, we're gone.
Alright.
I do to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.